We've got a really full agenda here tonight. So let's get started. Let's start with the President Leighton, so then we'll start with the people on the panel. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States, and to the republic of its lands, one nation, of God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Thank you.
What call could they have?
President Edwards.
Here.
Vice President Wadore.
Here.
President Zer. Secretary Zeller.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Nadeen. And Trustee Zer.
Here.
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
All right, thank you. All right, well, as I said, we've got an action-packed agenda here, a lot of stuff on it. Thank you all the guests for being here. We get used to this, this, uh, enjoying meetings that we've been having here. It makes it very happy. Great to see everybody here. So with that, we have our guests here to talk about our over 2040 comprehensive conservation plan with visions of 2070. You're going to begin the presentation.
Uh, let's see, uh, this is, uh, their third go-around with it today, just kickoff. They met earlier, this is the Upland Design Team. They met earlier, some of you have met, Michelle Kelly, and this is Jesse Flatley. This is their third go-around with it. They started with the directors, they went through and met with the managers a couple of hours ago, and now they're sitting out and talking with the joint board here. So we appreciate everybody's time and attention, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Michelle.
Um, all right, so thank you so much for joining us this evening and letting us be part of your board meeting. We're really excited to start getting input. This is very much the beginning of this process, which is a few weeks into it, and we'd like to talk to all of you early on, as well as the staff who we had to talk to earlier today, so that we can hear from you, what you know about the district, what you think, and also what your hopes are for this whole process. Um, so this evening, we're gonna have a little bit of a SWOT analysis, a little bit of visioning, and we hope you're all willing to give a little bit of input and, and talk and, um, be forthright with your comments, both positive as well as maybe challenges you see for the district. Um, next slide. So in front of you is our little mini-agenda, and I always like to know and tell everybody where we're going. So this first part, and, um, talk just a little bit about the timeline, and then we'll go through the visioning sorts of things. Um, a lot of you saw, um, the presentation about the whole process, so we won't go into a ton of detail, but we'll just briefly go over that, because I think some of the foundations, them personally, have not that, that presentation. Yes, okay, awesome. All right. Um, so this is our project team, Jesse and I, as all of you can see today. Um, but we have a wonderful group of people that are helping us, just giving the highlights. Um, Upland Design is a landscape architecture firm. Um, we do a lot of part planning, that's our major focus. We've been doing this for 27 years, and, um, we have an office in Plainfield, Illinois, as well as, um, Zylent in Chicago, and about half our staff is in each location, making up about 24 people. Um, most of them are landscape architects. And so between, besides Jesse and I, we also have Liz, who's our project manager, and kind of is going to corral, um, this whole project. Along underneath, you can see the Upland team is 110%, they're specialists in, um, financial strategy as well as recreation, right? So they're doing some recommendations in that area. Then in the upper right, we have Engineering Resource Associates, they're civil engineers, stormwater managers, ecologists, and specialists in GIS, so they're gonna be helping us look at big, big pieces of land and understanding what's going on with them, um, and then helping with, uh, recommendations. And then Dewberry underneath them is our architect. So, um, they have already started by going out to see, um, buildings. Uh, they did that last week, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, and, um, they will be, uh, giving lovely recommendations. And then under them is Community Research. Community is a community-wide survey and analysis firm, and they worked for you all before. So they have data on the county already, and one of the key things is that they're gonna be able to do a statistically valid survey of the county, about the district, and also be able to compare to past surveys. Um, so that is some really valid, wonderful data to have. And then finally, um, Chris, with Better Consulting Enterprises, they do economics feasibility, benchmarking, they kind of, um, hit the big picture, as well as looking a little bit at ecotourism and, um, programming side, where we think about money potentially coming in for affecting the county as far as tourism, like the district does for that. Uh, so that is our team, thanks. And then this is, on the left, all of our major tasks. And across the top, you see some dates, so October 25th, October 25 is when we, in essence, started, and we expect to finish this up in February of '27. So it's many months, and we think of it as a journey that we're taking with all of you to go from this, uh, you know, early stage and this exciting, um, start to, um, an ending result when you could take a document, a plan, and really be able to head off into an amazing future. So, uh, the tasks on the left-hand side are project management, goes throughout. Um, secondly is inventory and resource analysis, which is what we're doing right now by going to the sites, looking at it, looking at the sites in person, but we're also, will be looking at them in GIS and understanding, um, information that your staff is able to share with us. And then we go into task three, and stakeholder is, actually you all, you're all stakeholders, so we're, we're starting that now, um, but we'll also be continuing that, um, in January with people that are outside of the agency. So we'll be doing a little bit more public, and then we'll go into like the open house and civil pop-ups, and then a big survey where we go across the district. Our goal is to kind of let the community know this is happening by building before that survey gets to their door. So hopefully, most of the people who get that survey, they will already know that you're doing this process. Um, and then we take all that information, go into task four, needs assessment and benchmarking. So here, we're listing, we've listened to all the community, and now we're gonna try to say, all right, what are the needs? What do we need to do to meet those needs? And then also, look at similar agencies, both the state, out of the state, to compare what you all are doing and kind of help us start recommendations. Um, and then we do visioning and strategic planning, I have to say, visioning, I think, was through our process, so we're already gonna start that tonight. And then plan development and recommendations. And for this process, the recommendations, we are going, we're really developing them with everyone's input, the community, the staff, focus groups, and all of our experts, but then there's a back and forth, making sure that those recommendations fit this agency, this community, um, before they actually, you know, go into the plan. Because just because another community is doing this, doesn't mean it's right for you. Um, and then, uh, funding and implementation strategies, and that's really figuring out how to, how to move it all forward. What does it look like? How many years? What happens each year? And where's that money gonna come from? And then finally, our develop, develop, deliverables, um, which is just the package altogether, uh, turn. So, any questions on that?
I'd like to get a big picture. So we have the conservation district plan. We also have our county plan, which the district is part of. We also have the C-HAB plan, which the district is part of, probably is broader state plan. So how do you relate to those other plans, when you're here?
Yeah, so where there's, um, places within those plans that they really are overlapping this agency, those are the areas that we wanna look at and pull in. So the, the state has its, its plan, I think it's a five-year plan they do, and, um, because that also guides our grants, we tend to look at that frequently, the state one. Um, and so some of those things are things that really align with what you do, some of them aren't perfect, right? So we look for the synergy of where it really aligns with your mission and your goals, and then bring those in, so that there's some synergy. Other questions? Awesome, great, next. So you can take this with you, is it, that slide is here, and if you, if you wanna come back to it, like, where are we in this process? That's a nice slide. All right, and right now, as I said, we're, um, we've been doing site visits, we're actually going out in the reserves, um, again tomorrow, and, because it's going to be beautiful tomorrow, and, um, and that should, we should hit, have hit every single public access, um, by that time, by the time we finish tomorrow. So, um, that's kind of exciting. Um, the Conservation District is sharing data with us, so we've kind of got the portal all set up, we've given them a list of things we hope to have, and they're starting to gather that. And so by the middle of December, we should have all of that data in our hands, and then we'll be doing analysis and together. And then, of course, we've also done a stakeholder worksheet for the district, just giving them ideas, who are those people outside of the agency that we wanna have at future stakeholder meetings? And honestly, they've already got a really good start.
You visit, uh, those sites that are not open to the public?
Great question. So the sites that are not open to the public and the sites that, which also includes sites that might be agriculture, in agriculture right now, and not in, uh, kind of a nature preserve or, um, that kind of use. Um, generally, we're not visiting those sites, we're studying those sites though, um, with GIS and with aerial pictures, and we'll be talking to staff about what their plans are for those sites, how they're managing it and how they're working, and then baking recommendations. All right. Um, they go to think about, okay, in the future, with imagination and wisdom. So you all bring wisdom to this table, wisdom of your knowledge of the county sites, of the board members, and, um, along with that, I want you to also bring imagination. Where can we go? What is that story going to be future? In 2071, when, you know, all of this plan that you have made are completed, what will the district look like? Kind of an exciting thought. Next slide. So right now, I want you to just think as big as possible. What are your goals, maybe big or small objectives and outcomes that you hope from, not just the planning process, just the next 14 months, but out many years? What Conservation District can be? What are you excited about? What could it be? Who's going to be the first person?
Maybe every resident of McHenry County visits a site? Something that's part of every resident's life?
Else?
Should be a destination. Not just the county people.
It'd be a destination for people that live in other places to come here and know of your district.
I'd like it to be so securely funded that there wasn't ever a feeling of scarcity, always, always enough safety, always enough progress, always enough money to do whatever is imagination.
Have as much connectivity through green pathways as possible. So I could start from Eberin, Illinois, and basically go through the state, but if I were alive, it would be, well, it's 70, uh, 26, so weird. 2040, whenever the, the end date is, maximum connectivity between, uh, all the sites, current and future sites.
I think about many great success stories already. In some of the, the time that I've had a better chance to be aware and appreciative of the district's role here, you know, how connectivity is a part of it, of the conduit it can be, physically, the greenways, connections, you know, to municipal, to township, to other resources, natural and recreationally, but also in terms of, uh, best practices and governmental cooperation. So I'm excited about how this can be a roadmap to get into that spot. But again, county-wide, continue to strive all our agencies. We're excellent.
I would like to build on that, that's right, Kevin. I, I would love for all of the municipalities and everyone to assume that conservation should have a seated table when they are making their decision for what they wanna do and how they wanna. Yes, I, I guess I was gonna build on all of that, because, and we were just dead hack the tech, and, uh, Tuesday, and, uh, President Richmond, and the statement embracing the hack the tech wildlife refuge and Conservation District as a very position of being the gateway unity to this refuge, but that, um, you know, embracing that has taken time, you know, because there are other things that can happen with the land that you have, but embracing this opportunity to have that as part of their heritage, and I'd just like to see that involved, that they have some role to play in that, that are right, are not necessarily right on the, that's Conservation District. And my first thought was, how can we connect all of these sites, so that I, that all this ties in?
And I think what you'll see in the next two days, as you have probably already today, but, you know, the, the platform of diversity in terms of, you know, going from the rural to the, or developed, suburban, and how we can weave through all of that, I'm super, super excited about.
Else? Else? All right, and more. So we're gonna do a little SWOT analysis, which you probably have done before, um, so, but the 30-second review, uh, bring it all back into your, fresh into your heads, is, um, we look at, we look inside the agency, and then we look outside the agency. And when we look inside, we look at strengths, what we've got, and weaknesses, right? And then when we look outside, we look at opportunities and threats. So, um, we're gonna go through each of these, and we've added some questions either the slides to help you think of different categories, go ahead to the next one. Um, and also, when you think of the agency, it is, it's complex, there's lots of parts to it. So the world, across the bottom, you know, outreach, financial, organizational, staff, infrastructure, what all these things make up a successful, you know, agency that does what it does? So, let's talk first about the strengths. What is it that do well? What is it that people compliment, talk about, love, turn to, ask for more?
The knowledge of the staff, it's phenomenal. It is such a high-quality staff, and it doesn't matter if you're talking about trees or plants or education, uh, that the staff is just, uh, world-class.
What else?
The, the whole history, I'm gonna have to, to go off of what Ron said about the staff. I mean, they're so knowledgeable about native plants, native seeds, all the teaching that they, presentations that they do, all the history that they share about the plant that was preserved, where, what was there before, the indigenous or, you know, some common founding gardens. Things like that, it's just really sharing the legacy and then bringing their expertise to make sure that sense of native history of what the planet liked, like restoring it to that first state that, you know, was here hundreds of years before, you know, we all populated it and suburbanized it.
What, what makes this area unique?
Physically?
Sure, physically.
Well, the, the way the environment's like.
So that's a strength, being able to tell that story. Yes. Anything you can think of about, um, the way the agent's brought it along? And it's actual, like, its administration and organization, any strengths in that area?
I think it's recognized, I think it's, district is recognized regionally and nationally, uh, you know, as a leading, uh, institution, and, you know, that's been through many years of hard work, and, uh, uh, you know, I, I don't think anyone's saying, we're done, you know, like, we'd wanna continue, and, you know, so that's it. Oh, we don't even know, I think, what we're, what can be out there.
Physically, very effective, too. Really, uh, very impressive the way they put the budgets together, the, the analysis, make sure the funding is where it needs to be.
I think our, just our diverse acreage. I mean, 6,000 acres of, all kinds of, you know, wetlands, savanna, oh, so just, you know, that's a, that, it's rare, I think, to have that many different kinds of topography and.
Safety protected and, yeah, open to the public. Next one. And so weaknesses. Now, sometimes it's hard to say anything bad, you pretend the staff aren't here. But obviously, you're doing this plan for a reason. So what are some of the things that maybe are a weakness right now?
I'll start.
All right.
I think because it's been brought up in, in some past get-togethers, that we're seeing that they're forcing a switch into a mindset of, of more forward-thinking, more abundance, more possibility, and I don't know if any of you have had that personal time where you had to step out of a negative situation and move forward into a bigger, more successful thing, but that's what the district is doing now, is where instead of being tamped down by budgets that have been so tight, now there's an opportunity for so much expansion and enthusiasm and passion, but that's really hard to grab.
It's hard to switch, yeah, sure. Else? On all the, all the areas, programming, buildings?
There might be some structures within the, for, you know, maintenance, or, you know, we've, we've been in that holding pattern, you know, you know that there's potential here and there, but, you know, haven't been able to get into it.
How about the staffing levels? Feel like we think a good place?
Here's the, it's hard to say from the outside, because they make it happen no matter what. They've done that for so long, I mean, you guys could be strapped, but you get it done, so, um, yeah, they probably could.
Sure, you're seeing the data, but, you know, the acreage has gone like that, but the staffing is staying level. So that, you know, the number of employees per acre is, just keeps productivity.
Yes, there are no drones yet that are doing the same thing that people do. Awesome. All right, if you think it's something else, go ahead, let's go to the next one. So now, opportunities, sorry that some of that went, went a little wonky when I went into the, uh, the Apple computer. Um, but, uh, this, what we're thinking about was outside, okay? What are things that the district, maybe partnerships, um, maybe, um, other agencies, maybe just other people that might really help the district? Opportunities that are out there, could be programming, could be a building, um, be something built in the environment or a connection. What are the opportunities out there that need to be thinking about for the next 10, 20 years?
Historical and architectural, uh, entities that wanna preserve, uh, buildings. That's not our forte, but we've got a bunch of them. And we, we've tried to partner, particularly with historical societies, but we just, not much has come, although, nothing's come.
Well, it's an opportunity that's out there, yeah, that you'd like to see pursued. So, Ron? Think something.
No, still, I'll turn it over to Jack.
Um, I would say, uh, and it could have, could possibly be under weakness also, um, uh, partnering with other conservation organizations, uh, and I don't bring that up because, uh, with anything in particular, but just in general, just, uh, just seeing a lot of organization, organizational overlap, uh, different nonprofits and, and such, doing the same thing, and, and if they can join together and, and are partnering.
Do more with that kind of partnership idea, yeah, okay, you're good.
Yeah, the opportunity, you know, we just, maybe it's a recency thing, but, uh, the district and the foundation are working seems more effectively together, so there's an opportunity to continue to strengthen that relationship.
Um, are there any trends out there that you think touch this agency or that could be something that helps the agency?
Yeah, excuse me, it's a simple trend that's happened in country, uh, is the desire for experiences. So I don't know, I mean, our experiences might be on a lower, a smaller level, that is a strong.
Less stuff, more experiences, yeah, definitely, which is a trend, yes.
We kind of build on that, I mean, we had talked about the opportunities with structures, historical or, uh, like, I'll mention, which is trying to secure specific buildings, but we had had an opportunity earlier on with a private company to do land-based type experience, and that wasn't possible because just for a number of reasons, it didn't, it didn't go through, but another type of organization might be a public-private partnership where they have to bring the experience, um, into an area that's more of a destination. We've certainly been seeing how our role in, in just in the tourism, um, dollars are being brought into the county is huge, so, go on that.
And right now, you, are you partnering a little bit with the tourists, the tourism?
It's, well, and we're, the Conservation District is a huge part of that. Um, Elizabeth sits on the, naturally, McHenry County, just a tourism, oh, our ethical, all the corporations on there, the county partners in there. So it's, it's a real collaborative, uh, approach here in the county, uh, maybe build on a little bit more of this agency's,
what you can do specifically, right? What opportunities are there to build on that?
Sure, that sounds great.
And this is maybe more philosophical than something tangible, but I think, um, there's a lot of division in the country right now, and something that's, I think, what the Conservation District does is something that everyone can get behind and invest in. So I think it, having a bipartisan appeal, a multi-generational appeal is really strong at a time when a lot of things are, um, so divisive, yeah.
It's a, it's a very good middle ground that people can agree on and maybe set aside those other ideals that come in politics.
And some other opportunities in this, they look at the big, big picture, but I think these are two that I just don't wanna get lost, would be the Fox Bluff and the Corrigan, two, two beautiful, uh, facilities that you're not gonna see because they're not open to the public, but they're just treasures that we gotta figure out what to do with and how we open that up to the public.
Those are the type of opportunities for, um, on the, um, on the activity side of programs and outreach, do you, is there anything that you see there that trending-wise when we think of our youth and trying to reach them?
I've read a lot about a rejection of devices and social media from younger people right now, which I think is really interesting to see, so I think there might be a desire for connection with nature that young people could be reaching for.
Yeah, that you can build on, yeah. Invite people in and make them, uh, have an experience in off-site device. Yeah, could you do a walk in the woods without your device on? Put it away, couldn't we do that?
Yeah, I was talking with my daughter this week about, you know, who's coming out for the basketball team. Yeah, I was talking with my daughter this week about, you know, who was coming out for the basketball team. And she mentioned at her high school locally, there were only twenty-six kids in the entire school that went out for the program for freshmen and seniors. And she's like, you know, that should be the freshmen going out, you know, they're barely going to get three teams out of this. And it kind of mirrored, she said, other athletic programs. So, just, and, and from that standpoint, she said that kids, her peers, it's just harder for them to want to commit to these types of activities. So, what are the implications of that, you know, that, where are they at otherwise? Are they sedentary, are they, are they working, you know, whatever it happens to be? But, you know, to me, obviously, our sites being active, uh, focused, you know, they're never more critical. Even when you consider that side of the equation. So, team sports are, you know, you have the, the cream of the crop and everybody else, you know, the majority are not engaging. They don't find it fun or exciting, that started in seventh and eighth grades.
And is it our, is it our job to, to change that viewpoint? I mean, it's one thing to have great open spaces with lots of trails that that trend continues. So, is it one of our opportunities to to address that trend and, and, and fight against, I mean, fight against it other, other than just having tra- trails and great opportunities?
Uh, we had a, a friend of the family and, and, you know, they came, I forget what it was, a, a bird watching day, Glacial Park. And they lived within five miles and they had never been there, they were probably ten or eleven years old, you know? So, I think that our sites are opportunities for a large segment of our, of our population who have never been on, frankly. And we've got a ton of visitors, but.
I found on that a little bit because, um, you do do the find your wild, you, you, you're at your own pace or when you're out with your parents or whatever. So, our kids went through, uh, London Middle School where they did, every year they had a fitness marathon. And you had, it was an all-day thing and you had to, kind of, group and you trained for it and you had your, your alternate. And you had to read the map, you had to get from, from the school to the map and you used to see these kids going all over the place. You know, no, we're supposed to have this, but I'm thinking of like this find your wild, but more in an organized setting where you could find a site where you could have some kind of challenge, have them sign up as teens. Maybe they do some weight finding themselves and, because they had to do that as well, they had to get, and if they went out of order and they had to go back and do it again. Um, but something where you bring them together as an activity, because the one thing I think we felt like we missed out out with our kids is that they were always in, like, travel sports. And so, I feel like we missed out on those weekends of just coming out here, stuff like that. I mean, we were always outdoors, but I feel like we missed out on some. But something where it's, where instead of just making them go out and do it on their own when they have time, maybe if we had the staff doing something more organized, something like that, I don't know. Yeah, and even if what's organizing means planning ahead. So, when I started cross-country skiing with my granddaughter, I knew I wasn't in shape for that. So, but if it was just going to be she and I, I better be in shape for it. So, we started like in July, talking about, you know, what do we need, how do we need people to do it so that we can go all the way around and make it. We're one of you in, uh, Wonder Lake, that's a nice circle to get on feet.
I think Harrison Benwell.
Yeah, Harrison, that, that's a great cross-country, but for, like, beginners. But, you know, giving like a, a time where, are you planning on this? Are you a grandparent that needs to start walking now so that you can take that, or your grandchildren?
You need energy for those grandkids, yes, like, and here's a plan.
Another opportunity, a trend that we could address is, uh, especially for young people, the whole mental health and stress that they're feeling. And, you know, all the studies that show, you're on nature, just in the brain scans, the, you know, respiration, heart rates and everything. All say it's healthy to be out there, so we can connect those dots and help them.
Bringing in the, the health component of it.
Um, this is probably something that Caitlin and her team think about all the time, but I'll be curious through this process of what you all come to as, what should be the goal of how many students we try to have moving through our group programs each year, what should it be now, what should it be in twenty seventy-one? That is hard to say. Um, you know, is, is the volume of students or the capacity that we have appropriate now? What, you know, what's the growth in the vision part of this sheet? I think it would be amazing for, like, every McHenry County student to go through a program and have some sort of environmental literacy certificate. But is that going to be the strategic direction of a fifth year? So, all that to say, I think an opportunity is to look at capacity for the future, for the future. If it's not.
Yeah, nice. All right. So, the last one is threats. And so, the idea is, again, things that are outside the agency, that they affect it in a negative way. What are the things that are happening now? And also, what do you see in the future that could be a negative effect to the agency?
Development.
Yeah. And say a little more about that, how do you see development as?
Um, well, there's developing lands that have rare and/or quality ecological aspects to them, and destroying those ecological aspects. There's, uh, there's obviously the groundwater issues and, and having, having enough open space to help, uh, help preserve groundwater.
And I also, the noise, the light pollution, impervious surfaces, all the traffic that will develop, the pasture development. You've got smokestacks, thrown plants, food farm.
We should all, all night.
They can have all kinds of negative effects, no, that's, that's very helpful. Especially if they're in a space that is quite adjacent to you, right? Right, or a space that you've targeted as needing to be stayed.
There's been a lot of change in plant items, at least I know, sleep, rural site, for example. Uh, plants are getting taller, uh, getting weedier. And it's, and it just requires more and more funds for restoration. Uh, and I think that's going to be something that.
Will continue as it gets warmer.
And there are wetlands that become very weedy once they go dark, right?
We could there are referendums that we don't have passed. Last, this time last year, it is successful referendum, but in the future, there are votes that don't go our way.
So, losing, losing community support, yeah, because it is very hard to pass a referendum.
Another with development is having with, uh, the prescribed burns ha- having conflicts with people uh, not wanting burns right next to their properties and stuff.
I think it's taken on that, I was, from Tuesday? Oh, no, okay, that's brought up a whole, that was on Tuesday. Very interesting change, I moved to this area in eighty-one. Everybody was against burning, asthma and everything. And it was like, you just really had to watch, it was negative for burning. And then, all of a sudden, this has changed. Where no one's complaining about that in the papers or in the news media, it's almost like pro-burning. So, I don't know if it.
It can go back the other way. It's possible to.
When some public opinion or misinformation that could damage the way that Conservation District operates.
I'm not sure how to, to say this, there's actually a gentleman who, uh, received you, but um, it was very interesting when he talked about solar farms, because my initial impression, alternative energy is good. But he said that it's not as regulated as you may think it is. So, one of the concerns I have is that they'll put up solar farms without consideration for the impact it could have on the ecology.
That's happening right now, because the state now is denying the county to say no to any solar.
Oh, really?
Wow. And then also, our county had certain plants that they, oh, see, a planted underneath the solar panels so that it would help restore soils.
Yeah.
State comes in and says, no, they don't have, so we're not moving our solar seed.
They do have, uh, they do have a list from, uh, the county had a list.
No, but they have, there is a, like, a native plant list that they.
State does?
Oh, or, but I thought, I thought.
No, what, what's, well, yeah, I think, yeah, largely you are right. I mean, they've, they've taken away, like, how far we would have a bit deeper setback than allows, allows the state laws. If they test their standards, then we have to cite it. Counties are now suing and are now denying them, and so we've got several counties in lawsuits right now, so we don't know. But then the Senate Bill twenty-five came in and it's now taking what restrictions they apply to the county level. They're applying it to the village level, too. But they did, part of it did include native plant takes and they do, um, that's a need, or that's not too far off. Some, some of the, um, companies, the projects are, they work really well, they want to do the right thing, others don't, I mean, don't. Or, that because they know they're going to have to decide, but I think we're, we're starting to see some changes. But I was under the stand, understanding with the, um, some of the community solar, that one didn't have nearly the environmental impact that we talk about, and I think Nora's the one who can speak to this more than you.
Well, I work for a global energy company, which for now, looking towards gasoline, oil, um, and thermal. Um, yeah, so it's your, well, the, the utility scale projects, the ones that you're going to go anywhere from three hundred megawatt higher. You know, those are large projects and those are going to be regulated because they're actually putting the, um, energy that's generated, the electrons on the grid. In order to get them on the grid, there's a lot of, uh, regulation, not only, well, not so much of this, I mean, there is state regulation, county regulations, the county regulation, like, it's more, I've noticed, to the SWIP, stormwater management, your vegetation management. But as far as the federal regulation, that gets into where you're going to put it on the grid. So, here we have PJM and MISO systems, which is breaking middle part of United, or, oh, Midwest. And so, in order to, you can't put this on the grid unless you have permission from, for, which is your federal energy regulatory. Your community solar, they're kind of like just capturing solar for a very designated area. So, whether it's for, um, an industrial complex or, you know, a certain town or you've got your, you have designated, um, substation that is only going to service that service area that connects only through that substation rather than going on the grid and pushing the solar or the electrons to another comment, so, you know, because you have to optake it. And that comment will just sell it anywhere that, you know, I'm just giving comment as an example, but there's, there's others out there as well. So, those are kind of the nuances of it, how big the solar project is, the megawatt, what, what is it really for? Is it going to be more localized, is it going to be just servicing a small area? Is it going to be like a co-op solar, is it going to be community, or is it going to go utility scale, which is huge? Um, you know, I've got projects right now in Ohio that are on over six thousand acres of just the array. And then I've got forty-five miles of transmission that take me out to, um, the main substation. So, these are huge, huge projects that we're dealing with the Ohio Power Siding Board. Um, you know, and then, you know, they, we regulate and work with them as well. So, I know Illinois is, are pro-renewable, renewables, right? The only big solar team isn't, you know, yeah, it's a problem, but it's more the inverter wise. And, and the wind farms, um, are the ones that got, you know, I think more of an environmental impact because, you know, you've got migration, bird migration, or they can hit the turbine blades. So, the nice, when we look at it and we do our EA reports, we have to consider migration coverage and how the blade needs to turn in a certain direction or how it gets sighted and where it gets sighted. And every, you know, I can speak on anything, I don't want to. But it's really, you know, the regulation of, you know, what is it? Is it going to be something smaller or?
Bigger has more regulations, smaller as well. But for the county, I think either, really are a threat.
Huge, and.
Not that it can't be mitigated, but it, it needs to be something you're aware of.
Right, I mean, they're looking at Aglin because it's green, they know there's no environmental impact there. It's easy to put anything, whether solar or, um, they also look at the patterns, you know, they have to, they do study for the sunshine, the, the wind patterns, Ag's land is huge. Um, because the nice thing is, you know, you're going somewhere where you've got a brand-new slate or, I don't really to worry about, it's really, you know, making sure you fly with stormwater runoff and those different things. Um, farmers like it because a lot of them are struggling and, you know, these farms for industrial or for utility scale come overnight billionaires as soon as they sign these agreements. Because payment streams are huge to them. And, you know, they like it because they feel like, hey, I can't make it in farming, I'm not getting it. Terrorists won't let me sell my crop, or I've got crop failure for whatever reason. Um, you know, we see a lot of that in the farming community, especially southern part of the country. Um, you know, so it, it's really tough for farms right now. And, you know, I, I feel bad, I really do, because there's some beautiful plantation property that we're going on that they just can't make it anymore, they can't grow their pitches. So, well, they're looking to this to sustain.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other threats?
I like a negative man, you have so many of these. I think that threats from impacts of climate change affecting the landscape and how we do things from an ecological standpoint, and I also think competition for dollars for our grants and private funding streams and also just competition for attention related to that. You know, it used to be that I think people would give to their church and their PTA and it was, you know, giving has gotten so much broader than just people's backyards.
It's very easy to reach people. Sure. Then becomes a lot of noise, there's so many, so many, yeah.
I think our, we, we don't want there to be a propensity for people to take us for granted. And so, with all the success that the district has had and proving its resilience, its relationships within our community, um, people's engagement with the district, the outdoors. Not allow what we think. Want the success to, well, there's good. But the challenges will continue to come and emerge in places that we all hope.
To keeping that story alive, not get complacent, then it's all fine.
We, the threat with, um, development and, uh, something that Hackmate Tech has been designed to address is adding the corridors for migration in this, this time of climate change. But the migration is also, but those corridors are also useful for, for people to be able to, to, uh, um, have trails that, that go far and wide as opposed to just mile, mile down and a mile back.
So, can we get, it can be an opportunity to.
We talk about competition for dollars, I think competition for tax dollars. I mean, I think we got through last year, but we'll always face that kind of counter pressure to provide more services with less dollars. And we see that at every level, often. Terms of maintaining that levy, I think it's going to continue to always be a challenge.
How about, um, cost of services, inflation, things like that, that are outside of, outside of our control, most normal people?
See, those are what you.
I hope this day is no time soon, but executive turnover, if not handled well, has a chance of being a big threat. I think we probably all have professional experiences where there's a change in leadership and a bad hire and seeing how costly that can be. So um, I think this probably can fall into all different quadrants, but thinking about staffing, retention um, and making really smart hires, especially since Elizabeth has been here for so long and hopefully is here for many, many more years. But that will be a big change since Elizabeth's tenure is so long.
So an opportunity succession plan.
Opportunity for strong succession, any threat if it doesn't.
Really good continuity of mission and vision.
And when you talk about our competitors for money and the noise of getting the message out from so many sources, that's another backwards to the opportunity of working together with other conservation groups and having a unified message.
Do you feel like, you know, people get the conservation district is in the county? Like generally, if you went and talked to somebody and mentioned something about being on a board and what you do, would they get it? Would they know what that's all about?
Yeah. No. Oh, I see. I'm newer to the county. I'm on this board and I still feel like I would have trouble articulating it to someone. I come from the nonprofit world and so this to me is less straightforward. I think there's also a lot of different environmental organizations in the county. So who's who? Yeah. Oh, that's very helpful.
I also think people think, well, like park districts, they'll go to a park district, oh, why aren't you a park district? Or, you know, why don't you offer some of these others that services?
And we're unique. There are only four conservation districts in the state. Five, five, so it's unique.
Or on the. Or. Just like four of them.
Four others.
And I, I can't speak to this officially, but like, you know, would there ever be a visitor center for Hack attack? Or just off the road from Lost Valley? And how does that create a perception of there's too much of this, you know, what's going on? So.
Yeah, we have a fundraiser to give the community foundation to establish a visitor center.
You know, and that's exciting and I'm super excited about that, but it's also a threat.
Yeah.
The other threat is that people look at the acreage, the holdings and say that that's land that's not contributing to the tax base. Now, we do pay for, for buildings, but, but they're saying that's land that if it were productive or if it was developed, it would, it would help fund the profers instead of drawing for.
Yeah, we had, I believe it was a year ago, like that we had actually someone, Lieutenant De Neeby being was somewhat negative with the conservation district saying that the more land the conservation district has, the less farmland there is. So they were very concerned about the, the district acquiring. I don't know if that was just the way you felt or if that was the way others and farmers felt, but just to keep an eye on a potential threat.
And which creates an opportunity for education. No, I see. And, and, and seriously, because we, because I think the dollars, yes, are not, the tax dollars are lost, but we just, we had the numbers come in for tourism dollars that are really outstanding. And then all the other ecosystem services that our land provides in a way of blood production prevention, we could get some kind of dollar amount on that. That could help with that narrative because this is, that's an ongoing, you, you hit it right on. That's going to be an ongoing. You know, point that's made and having that counterpoint and that education mode.
I, I can't, uh, I can't, I don't know the, the exact details, but I remember talking to a farmer who was upset with the special treatment that, that some farmers get when they rent district land. Again, I don't know the details, but there's that conflict of farmers who, who get to rent district land and and the other farmers.
Right.
Who are.
There's, there's so many benefits in having this open space in natural areas, but maybe there's a lot of farmers who don't know that, those benefits. So that's something that needs to be in the, the opportunities to share that benefits to farmland of having open space that is covered in native. nearby, there.
I think similar to what is the ideal volume of students to come through the program? I think that could be an interesting question. What is the ideal number of acreage? That ultimately the conservation district hires. Is there a cap? Is there not? Maybe that's something that's already been calculated and I just haven't retained it from my new trustee binder.
Well, maybe the way to look at that is how many times each, uh, each, uh, school child is to come through, come through a district program and have the right staff. That was, it's like, they're very, so. Fifth grade.
Yeah, it seems like once in your school, you know, your school years is not enough, you know, there's got to be.
I have a comment on that because schools are suffering too financially and the bus trips that. So it's not, not always a reflection on the district, say. Reflection on resources.
Me on the front. I, I just think lack of interest. I think, you know, and our marketing team does a great job really finding ways to keep that marketing so relevant and poignant and, you know, draw something where the younger crowd is like, hey, let's go check out Pleasure Park. Let's go check these things out because I think that find and you've got to find a way to really grab these new kids or young people with a brand. They all, you know, they all attract to different things. And it's really, you know, doing some sort of breath of fresh air, like explaining, hey, you know, we're trying to create a gem here. We're trying to create this beautiful ecological model to sustain and show what things could be like. And they all need the clean air, the clean water and the mental health. So I think really finding a way to not losing the focus, you know, and I don't know if we need to, I don't know if we need a TikTok page. I mean, something like that where we could just, you know, really focus on, you know, getting these the crowd to jazz them up.
Fun. We just activity TikTok.
And did you want to, did you want to be in the first TikTok? You're thinking about that?
Okay. Well, yeah, anything, you know, social media, anything that really, you know, get, I don't know if we need flashing billboards or bumper stickers on the cars and, you know, anything to get, uh, get it, get a fresh, hey, we gotta go check this out or this looks amazing.
You value something that you go to and you know, right.
Exactly. You know, really kind of free a buzz around it. You get a big stir like, it's like a lot. I know they dip in like, but you know, stuff about really promoting in so many different avenues to, to generation.
One thing with the district is our recreation is generally passive. And you might have exciting internet, oh, advertising, whatever, you know, social agenda advertising, but I never thought I would say this ever, but hopefully that we can find a site out. Because something that's very energetic.
Yes.
Opportunity.
Why did you say you never thought you'd say that? Tell me why.
Conservation, I always think of protecting the land. Also, when I'm at Coral as a very sensitive wooden, wooden floor. And one time there was a mountain biker there and I I had to confront him because the soils, the soils are so rich. So you have to be so careful where you place mountain bike, uh, trail. And then also in a way that it doesn't encourage other mountain bikers to or mountain bikers to go to another site to use it as a.
But you can see a value in it in the right side.
Because there's energy. Uh, there's a lot of energy.
One of my very good friends, um, who lived in Arizona at the time, found that her maybe thirteen year old son was into things on the internet that were very not healthy. And then talking to other mothers, she found that there were like four or five of these boys that were really not okay. And they decided to do a mountain bike. Moms weren't like, they'll do anything to save their sons, right? So they learned how to mountain bike themselves. And they had a big mountain bike group and it saved those boys. And who knows where they're going to go on and influence the world.
That's right. All right. Well, you guys might have to do this. I love it. All right. I've taken a whole hour, um, but if you have something else, I'd like to hear it now before we close this out.
I think it's hard to write down the unforeseeable, but another pandemic, another major something that's just completely unforeseeable. I think based on what we went through with COVID, it would be unwise to not expect that that could happen again in the next fifty years. I don't know how you planned for that, but.
Yeah, we lot, know a lot more today than we did in twenty nineteen, right?
And going back to the start of the district, nineteen, or nineteen seventy, like, what, what did those, you know, founding founders think about, you know, the people that helped start that organization in terms of what, what they were visioning? How they sat in this room or rooms similar or visioned out. Um, so just that, our plan, our roadmap, we find some ways to have, uh, that there's a nimbleness to it, that, uh, be relatable, understandable, but also nimble and acknowledging that, you know, the new people coming in may have a greater challenge in terms of time or they won't have gone through the experiences that we went through over the last fifty years of our life. So it's got to be relatable to the new people that are to be.
Thank you so much for all the great input. This was wonderful. Um, and Chelsea, thank you too for typing away all day long. You have to like soak your fingers in water. Um, this is your, um, kind of the image that you see up here that your marketing team put together that you will see over and over through the next fourteen months. So keep an eye out for that, just to kind of guide us through and have something that ties to your, you know, true logo with this, uh, planning process. And you will see.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
They can stay, they're going to start a meeting at six thirty, right? Yeah, so they're gonna during, they're gonna leave by six thirty. We put anyone, welcome to stay early, whatever they wish to do.
Did you stop snacks over here? Anybody want snacks?
In the board, uh, the foundation board, you're welcome to stay. Uh, I give a meeting and start at like thirty two. You're, you're welcome to stay with us. Snacks back there. All right, that's, um, review of the regular meeting agenda items for November, for November eighteenth, if we have a chance to take a look. Well, are there any items that you wish to have removed from the agenda? I'm seeing now against the agenda will stand as you will publish it as. Right, SMP global.
Can I say one thing though? Just, just two things here. So one of the things that is up for second reading and just to follow up should the board has read through, but we have two of our policy manuals that are being presented. And so the personnel policy manual, there was discussion on our alcohol and drug policy in our appendix. And we went back and forth with legal and our risk management agency. Thank you to President Everard and the further that. So what you will see is an amended policy specifically, we took out, um, serious injury um, as a reason just to, and we changed that to personal injury. Um, that was a change we made that. And then ultimately the language still is may, however, subject to, um, if an accident that requires no damage to property and other property damage to an individual, et cetera, uh, determined, we created a process to which the reporting, uh, structure would go. So it's clearly defined within the policy so that you know, as soon as possible, if shortly thereafter, that notification gets moved to, um, the supervisor, to the director, to the human resources manager. Um, and that way they can make an assessment to send the individual, should it be required for immediate testing. Refusal to go for testing should it be found is grounds for immediate termination. So that language is very clear. Um, in the alcohol and drug policy already, it does provide, you know, that there is testing with reasonable suspicion or whatever. Ultimately, should it become positive, there's an opportunity that doesn't mean termination. But in this case, language was shifted that failure to go and direct to would be that. So that was agreeable counsel. We went back and forth. I appreciate Jenny and all the conversations back with all the attorneys and all this to get this to a place to there. And so that's in the policy. The other item, uh, that Treasurers of Memren brought up was related to sole purchasing. Um, and ultimately we had some experiences, uh, where we had received a contract. Um, we use that contract over multiple years. It didn't necessarily in a calendar year exceed the bidding threshold, but it was more so a reference and we can't necessarily get multiple calls. It was a sole source. So, uh, council felt that the language that we had already in the policy was enough to do what we needed to do. We didn't need to clarify it further. And so that's more of just an, again, an internal process procedure to make sure. So no changes there. I just wanted to highlight that for you that we did listen, we responded.
And I know Sean's not here, but he was satisfied with what we ran as well, so.
That's all you just want to mention is to make sure everybody.
All right. And before we move on to the next, do want to, uh, compliment, uh, the district for, uh, rolling with the punches in terms of the, uh, uh, Aurora Borealis and opening up, uh, sites for people to come in and see that was, you know, that was great. What a rare opportunity and, you know, did many people try?
Um, I heard about fifty at the Valley, maybe. I don't know.
But just to the record of the staff, I mean, like this is an idea. Let's seize the opportunity. We want to connect. Here's a rare moment. Let's get people out to the site. So between operations to law enforcement, to natural resources, to marketing, communication, all that together, uh, to make that happen. So.
After Friends of Hack Attack, I mean, it was just like magical to walk out of the visitor center and there's a curtain of red green to the, the, uh, what? That beyond that ledge where it's, you know, darker away from the lighting. And then this big pillar of red came down. It was so vivid. You could see it walking out with your eyes, you know, but as we left, as people were leaving, you know, all these cars along Hardest Road, you know, from off of thirty one. And that was, it was disappointing. They're all looking out over. Wow, that was definitely, kudos to the staff for.
Yeah.
Opening that up. Okay, with that, S and P global ratings report.
Okay, so we just wanted to provide, just to answer any questions, the district was contacted to go ahead and have a review that was done and we. Andy did an amazing job of responding to the questions, we went through all of that, we sat through a review with the rating agency. And provided that, and then they did downgrade it from what was a very good double A plus to double A. And the drawdown that the district had knowledge, obviously, that we were drawing down because of where we are and ultimately the perception of. Not being able to see the increase year over year, so again, I just wanted to make sure that the board, this is still a very solid. Rating, and once we get through all of that, we'll be able to go back out and.
And really, they cited one, one instance as to why they dropped the rating, that is, because we dipped into the reserves. Only because of a timing issue in terms of revenues in, revenues out. So we dipped into that, we all knew that and we, you know, we all voted on it, it was the right thing to do, but they're obligated to say, oh, wait a minute. You know, that, that does have an impact, so we'll, we'll get right back to. And to put it in comparison, where's the state of Illinois, BBB or B minus, minus, minus? We're fine at A.
Another thing is it's very concerning, if you have a chance to read somewhere, Scott, the district's rating. It's a slight downgrade, but we've been double A the first time I was involved since two thousand and seven. The Moody's were double A one, which falls for any time without double A. One thing we do know from going under Moody's, they provided a scorecard to show you how they broke the rating down, S and P didn't do that this time. And as I said, that reserves and your operating surplus or deficit, fifty percent of that total grade, so that drives everything. When you consider what's happened with our reserves in the last few years, and then our projection of the down in twenty six this year and twenty seven next year. I was very pleased that we're double A and it would have been a negative outlook or something, so. Had a lot of faith in that proposition and those tasks did to come and they will restore at twenty eight, we're back at twenty five percent. And we can review it again after twenty eight, it's almost guaranteed.
Great, thank you. All right. Liz Smith, you got a report for us?
Just briefly, so landscapes is out online, nice president's letter and great, a lot of activities that are still planned for the year ahead. This past Friday, just wanna highlight, thank you, trustee Brady joined us out at Pleasant Valley, we held our second native led. Climate conversation at the Biden Ranch there at Pleasant Valley, Chicago Wilderness Life Field, our first one in January, which was an indigenous led. And so our Barry Ombrenness, she has been the point person to help eat that and Zach has been joining very heavily in with our climate team and. Gave support and just the work there to make that event possible and it was just a lovely day to hear. Their perspective and the relationship that's that's being built to be forward, so that ties into, you know, with Trickster's Cultural Center. They'll have a secret invitation coming up in December on the twenty fourth for the, twenty first for the Winter Solstice. Foundation is hosting a gathering and our board is invited to partake in a lot of the experience that's there, trustees, yes. Directors and so just a lot of things that are being created, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the team.
All right, thank you. Prestise report, have anything you want us?
I'll just say about the native led climate summit on Friday, it was very inspiring. And very authentic, it seemed to me that the connections in that space that day. Were very authentic and respectful. And it was just a nice reminder to consider things from different perspectives and. It was really valuable.
Yeah.
Thank you. What else? Any public comments, maybe anybody on the line?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, you have a motion to adjourn to go into executive session.
We need to say the reason why, please.
Oh, hold on, yep. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C five purchase lease of. I can't read real property and real property and two C twenty one review of closed session minutes, the open meetings act.
I move to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Secretary Zeller?
Yes.
Fetsy Brady?
Yes.
Fetsy Derrick?
Yes.
Vice President Wazorek?
Yes.
Fetsy Lady?
Yes.
President Everard?
Yes. Go re convene. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call for Friday, I'm sorry.
President Everard?
Yes, here.
Vice President Wazorek?
Here.
Secretary Zeller?
Uh, here, Fetsy Brady, here, Fetsy Lady, we're, and Fetsy Derrick.
Here.
Everybody's here?
Fine. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, bye, I second, all right, second to one, Mike. I don't wanna leave. There's still cookies.
Secretary Zeller? Yeah, Fetsy Brady, yes, Vice President Wazorek?
Yes.
Fetsy Derrick?
Yes.
Fetsy Lady?
Yes.
And President Everard?
Yes.
Six fifty thirty.
And our adjourn, all of this.